I want to welcome you this evening to our town hall meeting on the Old Newgate Prison and Copper Mine. I'm Tammy Zawostowski, State Representative for the 61st District, which represents East Granby, Suffolk, and the portion of Windsor that's closest to East Granby, which is the northern part of Oconik and Rainbow. There's two main reasons I think it's really important to have this meeting tonight. The first one is that I think the community needs to know what's going on up at Old Newgate. It's been closed for a while, and now signs of activity are starting to come out. Oh, it's great. I was talking before. I get calls and emails. Two people have seen trucks going up and down Newgate, and it's the first time I've ever had people calling about trucks and actually happy about them. Anyway, that's the reason, to keep the community informed. And I also think it's important to have the people that are working on Newgate and who are actively involved know what the community has in mind as well, what the community expects. And I think keeping the community engaged, whether it's the East Granby community or the historical community as a whole, is going to be really important for the success of Newgate going forward. You know, there has been input that we've gotten over the past months when we've opened a dialogue on it. And we've had ideas like, "Let's bring back the Halloween haunted house." We've had things, "Hey, how about Veet's Tavern? What's going on with that? Wouldn't it be nice to be able to have maybe weddings up there? Wouldn't it look really good if we got the Historical Society coach up there at the same time?" And other things that I find personally interesting, which would be maybe coordinating with other activities in town. We had the Revolutionary War in Camp last year, two years ago now. And to coordinate that kind of activity, to just create synergies to get people involved in history and also in East Granby. And my personal favorite, I think it would be really good to have a Newgate working with the schools. I think it would be a very, very positive thing for both the schools and for Newgate. Anyway, it's not going to be a night of speeches from us. We're going to hear from the people that are directly involved. But for a couple of minutes here, I just want to, they are co-hosts, so I want to just give them an opportunity to speak a few minutes. We have Senator John Kissel and State Representative Bill Semansky. I'll invite John Kissel up here right now.
Thanks, Tammy. I'll be mercifully brief. First of all, now I know why they call today Fat Tuesday, because I'm feeling like I'm fat on. But Dan's going to do a wonderful job doing the presentation. We've had several meetings on Newgate over the last few years, seeing it come to fruition. Bill's been fabulous prior to when Tammy was elected in her own right. Congratulations. And so, this has been sort of fits and starts, but I think that we're rounding an important corner right now. So, not only is this tremendous for all the folks in East Granby, but this is a real asset for North Central Connecticut. And I feel like the time is getting very exciting, when they're beginning to do some work in the hard, freezing winter months, to lay the groundwork for what they're going to be able to do soon as spring gets here, and it can get here any sooner, if you ask me. So, thank you, Tammy, for putting this all together. Happy to co-host it with you. And Bill, Representative Semansky?
I'm pretty excited about Old Newgate, because when I first moved to Connecticut in 1987, one of the first things I did with my wife and my two young boys was take them on a tour to prison. And we still have one of those R&amp;Ks that they made back at the time, and we have a lithograph of the prison in our rooms. So, it was special to me. It was something my first introduction to Connecticut. Then when I became a representative, I actually represented the East Granby before Tammy, got involved in Newgate, and I'm really excited now to continue the trend of being involved in Newgate, because many of you remember Rich Ferrari. And every time I run into Rich, he says, "What's going on at Newgate?" And I tell him, "This is what's happening in some kind of..." I'm not going to believe it until I see it. Well, it's actually happening. Things are occurring at the Old Newgate, and I'm really excited about it, and I'm glad you're here to hear about the progress that's being made. Thank you.
I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the two people. Actually, First Selectman Jim Hayden walked in. I offered him the opportunity to say a few words. But before we start the meet of the presentation, you want to come up here, Jim? Perfect timing. Yeah, almost. There you go.
Good evening and welcome. My apologies for being a little late, but once you hear the reason, you'll understand that perhaps it's a good reason. There's another committee meeting that I attended at 5:00 that just got over, that is doing the 50th anniversary celebration of Vietnam and Vietnam vets. And it's going to be at the Air Museum and at the International Guard. Expect 8,000 to 10,000 people each day, July 10th, I'm sorry, July 11th until July 12th. So, there's going to be a really large activity, but I think it puts the spotlight on the Vietnam veterans, and I think it's well-deserved and well-suited. So, anyway, so my apologies for being late. A quick segue over to Old Newgate, and nobody's happier than I am to find out that we'd be able to take the sign that says "closed" after five years, and so that's terrific. So, again, my apologies for being late. Thank you, Tammy, for allowing me just a minute to start the preamble of some really good stuff that's going to be happening here in East Granby and Windsor Locks in July. And welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thanks, Jim. I'm going to move this cord before somebody hurts themselves. Anyway, I wanted to give you some background on the two people that are going to be doing the bulk of the presentation tonight. First one, Daniel Forrest is the, or Dan Forrest, is the Director of Art and Historic Preservation in the Department of Economic and Community Development. He's been a professional archaeologist for 17 years, more than 17 years, actually. Conducted over 60 archaeological surveys and excavations in every part of the state. Before he took the director's position as DECD, he worked closely with the staff of the Connecticut Office of the Arts to improve the granting process and to identify means of improving services for constituents in Connecticut. As a director, Dan is responsible for four historic state prisons: the Henry Whitefield House in Guilford, the Eric Sloan Museum in Kent, the Prudence Crandall Museum in Canterbury, and here, Old Newgate Prison in East Granby. He's assisted by Museum Director Karen Peterson, who's also here tonight, who has some fascinating stories. She's spent a lot of time here. She's worked for the Historic Preservation Office since 2001, and 15 years before that for the Antiquarian Landmark Society, including up at the Phelps Hathaway House in Suffolk. She's also been involved in the George Reed House in Delaware, Ebenezer Maxwell Mansion in Philadelphia, Historic Annapolis, and several other places. I hope that you are very free to ask a lot of questions and everything else. They're here to answer questions as well as make a presentation, and I really appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you. Dan?
Well, thank you very much for that introduction, and I want to thank you all for coming out and braving the cold. It's been a harsh winter all around. We'll talk a little bit on the impact that's had on our construction, but I want to let you know I have a couple of goals for this evening. First and foremost, we want to give you an update on the progress we're making for the rehabilitation, particularly for the guardhouse at Old Newgate. But also, to give you a much better understanding of the decisions we've made and why we've gone in the direction we've gone. That has everything to do with the particular characteristics of Old Newgate and the guardhouse itself, which have provided some specific challenges for us, but also some fantastic opportunities going forward. So, with that... So, yeah, my apologies here. Can you all hear me without this? Or, let me see if I can. First, I wanted to give you a quick summary. It has not been quiet, although it certainly seems dormant out at that site on a frequent enough basis. But DECD has moved forward, and prior to that, the Commission on Culture and Tourism has done a lot of important structural repairs throughout the property, not just within the prison yard, but for a number of the adjacent properties. These are just a couple of those highlights. We completed major structural repairs to Veet's Tavern. That's on the interior, included major bracing, cable bracing for the entire roof system, which was seriously challenged at the time. We've also done a lot of structural bracing for the barns at Veet's, to make sure that those continue to stand. New roof and carpenter repairs at the guardhouse itself, as well as new roof and major structural repairs at the adjacent property, entitled Old Newgate Road. We want to highlight, this was actually the project we were leading up to, we're hoping was going to be the great unveiling for our opening. In 2012, DECD completed a brand-new mine lighting system. For those of you, and I think that's just about everybody in the room, who are familiar with the property, many of you probably remember the old lighting system. That lighting system had failed consistently, and was actually a huge safety hazard. The lights were not actually designed for wet environments, and so they were continually shorting out. We had huge rust problems, and we had a lot of cabling that was so far out of code, we couldn't have an electrician touch it. So, we're very proud of the new lighting system, and we're looking forward to unveiling this to the broad public. This system was really designed to be durable, survive the constantly wet conditions in there. It's an all LED system. It's designed to try to retain the character of the mine, so the ambient light levels are actually quite low, surprisingly low, I think many of you will find. But there's a lot of feature lighting within the mine itself to really draw all the diverse attentions to the main highlights within the mine. And so, this, I know it's a little bit hard to see this, but this gives you a sense, there's lots of underrail lighting right now, so there are safe conditions that are unconceivable footing, but it doesn't flood the entire mine itself with light, so you don't lose the sense of what it was like to experience this, either as a prisoner or as a miner. That was very important to us in the planning. All right. The big reason we're here today is to talk about the guardhouse, and why exactly we've been focusing so much attention on this. So, this is just to get you oriented. Many of you are quite familiar with the property. The guardhouse, particularly at the west end, where that red arrow is pointing, is the primary challenge we're facing right now. This is the only intact standing structure within the prison yard. It's very important for a number of reasons, but in particular, this is one of our primary areas for doing interpretive exhibits, and so it's important for us to retain this. And most importantly, outside of the mine itself, the jug cells in the basement of this structure are some of the most evocative features that we have on the property itself. These make an enormous impression, and they're still intact. And there's also very important archaeological deposits that have yet to be excavated in the basement and below the floor slabs in this property, in this building. So, what is the issue? There's a very longstanding structural problem with the guardhouse, and particularly the west side of it. It was originally built over mine tailings. So, it was constructed originally to control the entrance in and out of the mine and make sure that the prisoners stayed where they were supposed to be. It was expanded. There was an addition built on the west end, and that west end was built on a steep slope. And so, when they constructed this, they did it frankly on the Jeep, and they used a lot of mine tailings, all the debris from the mine itself, piled it up and made a fairly level surface, and then just built what passes for the foundation for that part of the building on top of those loose materials. And that building has actually been settling, very likely from shortly after it was originally constructed, and there's lots and lots of evidence of that movement. So, again, this is a little bit hard to see. That white line is to give you a visual reference for what a level plane is and what the building looks like today. So, on the right side of the screen, you'll see the west end, and you'll see the variation of the brick, the darker brick on the right side of the screen is the part that was reconstructed by the state in 1976. That reconstruction was actually built on top of the sagging foundation. So, if you look carefully, you'll see the courses of the brick are actually, they added quite a few extra bricks in order to bring it up to level, so the new structure was roughly plumb and square when it was built. But in order to do that, they have to do all kinds of chinking. So, the arrow near the middle of the screen pointing shows you a course of brick wedges that were actually inserted between the two foundation sections. So, even by 1976, the foundation had already moved over four inches from where it should have been. They built a fairly square building on top of it. A couple of other things I want to point out about this structure. The brick that you see is not a full-depth brick wall. This is a single course of brick that's actually of a visual linear. Inside, it's a wood-framed structure. And by far, the worst section, where the movement is most aggressive, is in the southwest corner of the building. Again, the lighting isn't great here, but where you see that 1976 label, that is where brick was actually inserted in a section of the foundation that had already cracked and separated from the rest of the stone masonry. And again, these gaps are, in 1976, those gaps were two to three inches, in some cases pushing four inches, where they sort of repaired it. But you can see, they never did anything in the '70s to actually shore it up. They simply accommodated the structure itself that they built on top of it, and it was relatively stable. However, you see this lighter line in the brickwork where the 2009-plus label is. That's where the agency has been doing repointing. That's evidence that the actual superstructure above it, the brick, is actually continuing to move and separate from the rest of it. This has gotten bad enough that the building itself is now structurally unsound. It's unsafe. Nobody goes in or out of it unless they have a very specific reason to be there. And for those of you who know Lance, who's the dedicated staff member, his office was in this part of the building until we got him out of there. So, there's lots of reasons to be concerned about it. But even just as, again, as a visual reference, you can see, this building has been moving for a long time, and it's moving at an accelerating rate right now. So, why is this happening? As I mentioned, the building was constructed on fairly loose materials. In all of my career as a historic preservationist, as an archaeologist, I have never seen a building of this scale built in this fashion. So, what you can see here is that, in the background of the screen, you see the large stone blocks, which are visible from the exterior here. This is the west wall of the guardhouse, and you can see those huge gaps already between the stones. To the left is that southwest corner, which is sinking and moving away from the rest of the building. Those gaps are, those gaps have been widening. In fact, they've more than doubled in size over the last two years. So, it's moving rapidly. What is very difficult to see in this lighting is immediately below that is all of this loose rubble material. Those large stone blocks that you see are sitting directly on top of that loose rubble. There is, in essence, no foundation under this part of the building at all. This material, when we excavated, was loose enough, you could pull everything out with your hands. There was no actual digging. It was mostly moving loose material out. And immediately below this are voids between the stones that are directly supporting this building, and are large enough to stick your arm, in some cases, your leg through. So, it's a very unstable situation. These large stones, where they're actually laying on top of each other in physical contact with each other, would be relatively stable, not what you'd want to build on, but not as alarming as what we're seeing here. In essence, all of these stones can move independently of each other, which is the last thing you want for a building foundation system. All right. So, there is no laid stone beneath this part, portion of the building. What you see on the exterior is, in essence, the actual structure that is supporting the entire building. As you all know, in New England, we get lots of frosting. We get lots of freezing and thawing that always causes motion, but if you don't have a foundation that at least extends below the frost line, that moves a lot faster. So, all that stone debris is really loose. It's separated by all sorts of fine sands and gravels. So, this situation is not new, as I've said, and the state had made a significant effort to fix this problem back in 1998 or 2000. So, what the state had done is actually excavated the entire perimeter of this portion of the guardhouse to pour concrete all the way around what passed for the foundation, with the idea that it would hold all of that loose material together and shore the building up. This repair was unsuccessful, in essence, because that concrete is sinking essentially at the same rate as the building itself. So, everything is moving as a keystone. So, what are the challenges? What is the figurative and the literal balancing act that we're trying to pull off here? First, Old Newgate Prison is both a national historic landmark, which is the absolute highest status the federal government recognizes for historical significance. This is one of 62 national historic landmark properties in the state of Connecticut. It is also a state archaeological preserve, and it is an archaeological preserve because of the unique aspects of the archaeological deposits here. Those deposits are likely the very best source of new information about the mine, the prison, and in particular, the people who worked and were incarcerated at the property. We have fairly extensive documentary records. Some of you are familiar with the history of the property and have seen some of the prisoners' accounts and other histories of it. The archaeology brings an entirely different perspective to this. It is essentially a way to fact-check all of those historic narratives, and interesting in how people were actually living and doing their business here on the property. So, we need to be mindful about any repairs or reconstruction on the property that destroys that archaeological record, because it's our best chance of learning something new and shedding light on our own history. The other, one of the other issues is the long-term stabilization of the guardhouse requires a sound foundation system, and given the instability of the sediments on this slope and the very steep slope underlying this, both in the bedrock and the till, we needed to have a system that actually was firmly attached to something stable, so we weren't patching, we weren't putting a band-aid over this situation again. So, the commitment we made and the charge we gave to our engineers was to design a system, we don't talk about permanent repairs, but we gave them a 100-year time horizon to design a tube. So, we have confidence at the end of the day that this system is going to keep that building standing with reasonable maintenance for another century. So, arresting the movement of building requires the entire superstructure, so we're not dismantling this building. This building has to stay where it is while we build an entire new foundation system directly underneath it. So, it needs to be temporarily supported, essentially suspended, so to allow excavation directly underneath it. The building itself is unstable, so we're not dealing with a building that wants to stay upright at this point. It's far enough off-plumb, it would like to collapse if given the opportunity, which makes the construction much more delicate than it would be otherwise. And finally, the easy solutions. Some of the first options that we were offered by the engineers are not appropriate for this particular circumstance because of the archaeological sensitivity here. So, one of the options we were given was to do high-pressure grout injection directly underneath the building. So, in essence, what they would do is, using piping, they would inject flowing concrete, in essence, to consolidate and create an entire slab under the existing building, and then that slab itself would be supported by pilings. In doing that, you entomb and permanently destroy all of the archaeological materials that are directly underneath this, and in particular, in the jug cells, where you have the best chance of actually finding artifacts that are directly associated with the prisoners themselves. All right. And the other thing is, it's not just the materials directly below the guardhouse that are unstable. The entire hillside behind this building is moving. And we know that's moving. For those of you who are familiar, you know there's a large stone retaining wall below the guardhouse. That retaining wall itself is moving quite rapidly. It's deflected more than a foot, and itself was on the verge of collapse. Were that to collapse, the entire hillside above it and likely the guardhouse with it would be at real risk of coming down. So, the problem is, any heavy machinery that we would get to work on the guardhouse itself has to park directly above this retaining wall, so it's a very precarious situation. What you see in the image on the right is all the temporary shoring, which we've installed to keep that retaining wall intact throughout the construction period. But we still have major constraints on the size of equipment that we can use, how heavy it is, and how much vibration they can introduce without running the risk of that wall dimming away. And just to the left of this is the actual prison wall, the perimeter wall itself, and we don't want to do anything that's going to risk any damage to that itself. That is perhaps one of the most character-defining features of the entire property. So, what is the plan? We've done targeted archaeological excavations just in the areas that are going to be physically disturbed during the construction, those that haven't already been looked around with, to try to recover important information. The next phase is to drill micro piles. These are very thin, in essence, small diameter tubes that are filled with a very strong concrete-like material that extends the physical structure all the way down to the bedrock below the building. So, in many areas, this is a depth of 18 feet below the building itself. Everything above that is either unstable or questionable. So, in essence, we are building a stilt system, even if it is under this building. So, even if the hillside moves, this building will stay where it is right now. And then, we need to also install temporary beams around the entire perimeter of this portion of the building that are actually going to support it while everything underneath it is removed. So, the building is essentially going to be suspended in the air on a series of what are called needle beams, small diameter needle beams, and steel ivy beams are going to be bracketed all the way around the wall in order to keep everything in place. The other thing to keep in mind about this type of structure, unlike modern construction, where there's a concrete foundation, where everything is a single unit, and you can take a little piece, you can dig out underneath one section and not worry about it falling in, these are all individual stone blocks. If you dig under one of them, that stone block falls, and everything associated that is also supporting, also falls. So, we need to have a continuous system of support that's going to suspend the building itself. Finally, the most important piece of this is, after those micro piles are done, the ends of it are just going to be below the surface below the building. We're going to pour an entire new, what's called a gray beam, a very large piece of concrete, but one that is actually directly supported by those pilings extended to bedrock. And then, a new foundation for the same stone is going to be reconstructed to support the building, and those needle beams will be removed and everything will be patched. So, the goal here is that the building itself does not move, doesn't move an inch, any further. And at the end of the day, all of these pieces go back together, and the building will be stable for a longer term into the future. So, who's the team? The names you see in white are the consultants and contractors that work directly for DECD. Most important of these is probably BH+A, the Markman Hendryan Archetype out of Austin. Jack Glassman is the lead architect on the project and has taken the lead in designing this, along with the engineers from GEI Consultants and Structures North, John Botany. And in the lower right or middle right, you'll see Ross Harper. Dr. Harper's with Archaeological and Historical Services of Storrs. They're the firm who's done all the archaeology to date. They have some more work to be done once we temporarily stabilize the building. There'll be some excavations on the interior for the areas that are going to be disturbed during the actual gray beam construction. And then, the names in yellow are those who are awarded the construction contract through a bidding process. So, that's GL Capasso, Carmine Capasso represents them, and David Chapman, Jim Cook, and Kevin Wade from Blixley Arpaia and Chapman Incorporated. They are the engineers for the general contractor. All of these folks are working very carefully to make sure that all of the constraints that we just talked about are addressed very carefully, as well as the new situations we're encountering. For those of you who may own historic homes, you know, any kind of construction project comes with contingencies. This project is like that, ramped up by a factor of 10. Every little change introduces new complexities that we're working through. So, what progress have we made? As I mentioned before, we've done archaeological excavations, so everywhere where there's a temporary footing, everywhere where there needs to be major excavation, the archaeologists have gone in, done work themselves to recover artifacts and identify deposits that may be able to tell us some new aspect of the story of the people who've lived and worked here. So, these are just a couple of the highlights for the archaeological findings. What you see on the top is an iron fork. This is very likely a typical type of utensil that was used above ground, not likely comparable in the mine itself. The bottom is actually a Vermont coin, it's an 18th century coin. I don't have the specific data on this, but we're looking forward to seeing the full analysis of it. So, that's a copper or pooperous coin itself. And then, a small selection of some of the other materials. In the upper left is a caillan tobacco pipe bowl. That size and that form is very typical for early to mid 19th century. On the right are two buttons, likely from clothing worn by either prisoners or the folks working there. The center is a dunflint. The lower left is a strikealade, so this would have been used on a piece of steel in order to start fires. And on the top, what you see is the back of a button, that's the iron back of a button, again, a personal ornamentation. By far, the superstar artifact that was recovered, and I think this one, again, Newgate itself is a very evocative property. It's always an experience when you go there. Archaeologists occasionally find things that themselves are very evocative of the experiences people have on the property. What you see here is a handmade dye. This is made out of cowbell. It's tiny. It's about 3/8 of an inch on a side. Very well may have been made by a prisoner and secreted away. This was found directly below the floor slabs in the jug cells over in there. This and quite a few other small burnt pieces of straw, lots of things that suggest that the prisoners themselves were while away the time in figuring out how to keep themselves entertained. We are expecting quite a few more artifacts, not necessarily of this type, but again, those that speak to what the prisoners were doing to fill their time when they weren't actually working. And remember, these people were monitored quite extensively, so the fact that they were able to make these things and likely gamble with each other also gives you another glimpse into life in Old Newgate. All right, the micro piling. The image on the left, which I understand is very dark for you to see, what you see there... what you see there is actually the drilling rig. That was this week. Many of you have seen more activity on the site. You're going to see a lot more of that in the coming weeks. These are the pieces of construction equipment coming in. So this is, on the left, that very dark area, is actually the west wall of the guardhouse. And you'll see that drilling rig is just about vertical. And again, if you can see the top and bottom of that wall, you'll see a huge bulge in it. One of the latest challenges there, all the way at the southwest corner, the most affected area where we most want to get this work done. That wall is so far out of plumb that they can't get the drilling rig aligned properly right now. So we have to go back and do some minor reengineering to make sure that they can get this system installed where it needs to be. The other thing is, again, the reason that we're trying to avoid doing any sort of Band-Aid repairs on this property again, to kick the can down for the next generation, to have to deal with where they are drilling is actually where they're going to be drilling through the concrete that Department of Public Works and the Historical Commission poured out there in 1999 and 2000. So that's not a major challenge for this rig to get through, but it's just another example of how we don't want to make these sort of short-term decisions for this property. We want to get to the root of the problem, fix it once, and move on to the next challenge. On the right, you'll see the plan, those micropiles, along with the reinforced plates that are actually going to suspend everything. You'll see in the corners on this property, those two little squares in the jug cells. Many of you will recall, those are huge floor slabs, stone slabs that completely cover the floor of those jug cells. Those, in many cases, are individually stapled with huge iron rods. A number of those are going to be removed in order to make space either for temporary footings or the needle beams that need to be installed in here. And in some cases, they're going to be removed to allow some additional archaeological excavation so we get to the materials that we know are going to collapse as soon as we start excavating for the new foundation system itself. So there is progress. We have more. I wanted to give you an idea about the tentative schedule. And I'm underlying tentative because we've had many challenges. We have offered suggestions on when we would reopen in the past, and I am frankly not going to commit to a date, given the complexities that we're already struggling with. In fact, the last thing I want to do is give anybody unreasonable expectations for this. The overall stabilization, the way everything is being scheduled right now, we've had to make adjustments for the winter season, is 180 days for the stabilization of the building itself. That includes the reconstruction of the foundation system, everything buttoned up and done. There's going to be some additional time necessary in order to reconstruct that lower retaining wall as well as recording some of the brick masonry. I'm highlighting this, and this is a matter that we've discussed with a number of interested parties here. We are committed to opening these portions of this property as soon as it is safe to do so. In particular, because of the location of the guardhouse, as soon as we have a stable structure and we can guarantee safe physical access to the mine, it's our intent to open the mine. The aspect of property that many people are keenly interested in experiencing is that we've already done a lot of crap work for reopening. So we'd like to do that as soon as we can safely do so. All right, beyond the guardhouse. I've talked a lot about this one building, but we have an entire property here that we need to talk about. When I say that, this is a conversation we need to have about what the future of Old Newgate needs to be. Not just to reflect the interests of the folks here in East Grand Bay and surrounding towns, but the states and the visitors who come from out of state to experience this property. One of the commitments I'm making is that we need to have inclusive partnerships. In the past, there have been lots of disagreements, and in the future, there are going to be disagreements over what should happen on this property. But we need to be sitting around the table to work this out. So we are really looking forward to starting to gather some additional community conversations to not just talk about the physical needs of the property, which has been paramount for us to make sure that everything is still standing 10 years from now, but beyond that, you know, how we interpret this site. Old Newgate, in some ways, is a type of property that engenders a certain amount of laziness because the property itself is so powerful and experienced. And we don't want to fall into that trap of letting Old Newgate try to speak for itself. There's a lot of information that we have that needs to be presented to the public in creative ways. And in order to figure out the best way to do that, what we're interpreting and what we're presenting to the public, that needs to be a community conversation. The other thing, and this is something I want to pick up on, that Tammy had mentioned, community events, I think, are an absolute key component for us going forward. So this isn't just about the tremendous historic value of Old Newgate. This is about the property as a community asset. You all have been tremendously interested and supportive of Old Newgate for many years now. And we want to be able to open the doors to allow this place to reflect your own community's interest in events. So the Halloween event is one of those. We really hope to be able to do a soft opening this past fall for that. I'm very keenly interested in making sure we have that opportunity in 2015 to do that. But that's really just the beginning. We have had a number of discussions internally about doing temporary illuminations, other sorts of non-invasive work that really makes a big splash for the community and draws more attention and gets more people out to the property. In particular, for the reopening of Old Newgate when it's fully opened, we want to make a really big splash and invite everybody back down. We get calls, a number of you have mentioned getting calls, and I know a lot of you were interested. We get calls on this property every week. One of the challenges for us behind those personnels, you can't see what's happening. And we recognize that, it's very frustrating. I will also mention, it's one of the huge challenges for us. This property is far and away the most vandalized of any of our agency's properties. We have had at least half a dozen major break-ins in the last year, some of them causing fairly significant damage. People trying to pry through the iron gates, smashing windows, desperately trying to get into those mine shafts. And I think quite a few of you may know, this property has some repute as a haunted area. There are ghost hunters and other folks who are keenly interested in getting in there and experiencing the property for themselves. Part of that is frustration because the property has been closed for so long and people have not had easy access to it themselves. So we recognize this is a situation that in part has to be addressed through public opening. But it's also a matter of working with the local stakeholders to help us keep an eye on this property. We improve the security systems, we try to cut down on the issue, but we have major concerns. As I said, the guardhouse itself is physically unstable. We don't want anyone injured, regardless of the reason that they're in there. We do not want people on the property and the building itself at risk of collapse. So we're really hoping that you stay interested, stay involved. Let us know. If you're frustrated, that's fine, let us know. We need to have this conversation going forward. And I'm really looking forward to engaging everybody. The spring of this year, I'm targeting May as an opportunity for us to start a series of conversations, whether it's meetings like this to start with, whether it's in smaller groups to start figuring out interested individuals who want to have conversations about specific aspects of the property. But we want to have a clear plan, set goals for how we're going to ensure ongoing public access to the property, not just to open it briefly and then have another physical challenge, another preservation issue come where we need to close, or another public safety issue, but how we have a good long-term plan that everybody understands and where we can keep it open in the long run. And then again, how do we present the many incredibly interesting stories about this property in a way that is compelling to people? So the prison history is no longer, the mining history is really awesome here. But also, the insane history of this property as a public attraction itself is filled with curiosity. The menagerie that was kept here, the characters of the people who operated this facility, both the distant past and the more recent past. All of this is a really important part, not just of East Grand Bay's history, the property's history, but the state's history and our contributions to national history. So we have a lot to celebrate, and we have to have the confidence to do that very proactively and proudly. Finally, I wanted to give some acknowledgements, certainly to the elected officials who helped put this together and got the word out to make sure that people were aware of the opportunity to get these updates. I did want to call out Daniel Davis. Although you tried to duck the acknowledgement here, I wanted to acknowledge the hard work you put in organizing this event. And then, in particular, I'm personally going to call out Lance, who's unfortunately not with us tonight. Lance is perhaps the most dedicated employee that I work with in the state. Many of you know him. He's on that site all the time. He's often alone on that site. He's put his life into keeping that property in the best shape he possibly can. And that needs to be managed publicly as often as possible. As well as Karen Peterson, my museum director, who's with us here tonight. As well, Karen has been working tirelessly through some very complicated and often frustrating circumstances trying to get these projects underway and the reconstruction there as quickly as possible. Thank you. And if any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. Yes?
The yellow house next to the big, used to be occupied. Would occupation of that somehow prevent some of the vandalism that's going on?
Yeah, so in years past, the agency, the Old Connecticut Historical Commission, had actually had two staff members, in fact, our director, Jack Shanahan, who many of you know, living on the property. So 110 and then the, excuse me.
105.
105, my apologies. 105 and then the bungalow as well. Dave Corrier, who was my predecessor as staff archaeologist of the, in those houses. The best way to preserve buildings is to keep them in active use. So yeah, it's not just monitoring for the vandalism, it's actually keep those buildings in good condition, livable condition. We, along with a lot of other state agencies that manage property, had to stop putting our own staff members in there. There were issues with other agencies with the way that they were arranging those arrangements. And that hampered our own ability to keep these buildings in active use. I'm very much interested in having conversations with other community groups that may have interest, where we can work through lease arrangements where it's appropriate, not, you know, for a substantial fee, but anything that would get people back in those buildings to keep the site active and keep arrivals on the property itself.
Let me just say that before that happens, before people visit, both properties gave their own septic system, they don't need code, neither have central heat. Jack had electric base 14, and Dave Corrier had a propane heater in this living room. So I don't know anybody living in those spaces today. And they also need a well. So before we can, anyone who lives there, they need a well, they need massive capstone grates. So all doable, but it needs a big infrastructure.
And I didn't make the point, but we have to start thinking in these terms in the long range. So the best solution is an active site. And having proper use of these buildings, whether it's associated with Old Newgate itself or whether it's another community group that can take advantage of the space that we're not using, those are issues we need to plan for in the long run. Any other questions?
I also just wanted to build on something that Dan said. He mentioned how the archaeology is going to give us new information and add to, and how it also documents what the historical records tell us about Newgate. And he undersold himself. He didn't tell you two stories of the artifacts of two things he showed you. One was that little fork that he showed. We know from the records, before they built the prison kitchen, which really was in the 1820s, the food was taken to the prisoners where they worked at the forges and the nail shop and basically thrown at them like they were dogs. And a visitor describes this happening in 1807. The men would wash the food off in the water that they used at the glass business, and they'd use the forges to cook their food. So it didn't come with plates and knives and shovels. So what that is, that you saw, is made from a scrap of nail rock. So to make nails, the prisoners were given pre-made rods, and they'd cut it off and then, you know, formed the head and made the shank and made the nail. So somebody took a little scrap, perhaps bullet, and used his skills to create this little two-ton fork so he could eat like a civilized human being. So that is very, Dan talks about evocative. You know, you weren't going to find that written in any document, but it ties to what we know about how the prisoner heard the pit. You saw the dog. We know one prisoner who was there in the 1820s, actually, Pupple, just thought about a property. And he talks about frolicking, that's his word, he wrote this in the 1850s, and gambling all night. And so you think, gambling, all right, for that. So here up comes this little tiny dog, so tiny that you could hide it somewhere in a body fortress so that when they did body searches, they couldn't find it. And can't you imagine how angry they must have been in that jug cell rolling, died to play some gambling game, and the die goes with the truck and the fork. They still want to hit. So this is, and what we're finding is that when they brought all that loose mine tops, that Dan mentioned, they brought with them trash from the prison and then built that guardhouse addition on top. So for us, it's King Tut's tomb. It is a sealed deposit. We know anything we find below that dates from 1819 or before. So it is, as he says, our best opportunity to find out wonderful new information about the prison, which is why we're so excited about it. And the archaeologists are doing more analysis, they're doing all the final analysis that I'll be mailing. Did Newgate have dogs? And, you know, because they're finding the bones have been chewed by dogs. And if you look at the Hartford Kern in 1811, where the guards advertised it, his dog and one dog. So you're thinking, this guy has a cat as family, or something like that. But he did, he advertised it, announced it. You know, that kind of information. So it all helps us give nuances to the Newgate story.
Underneath the jug cell, underneath those floor slabs, there are thousands of. Some of those are food remains from the prisoners themselves. A lot of them are rats, huge numbers of rogue bones from there. Some of that is just the bricks from the engine and die and natural dirt. But in many cases, these are likely rogue populations that were active while the property was in use. So there are plenty of reasons, and, you know, as we all know, our society continues to struggle with major issues with crime and punishment and how to deal with incarcerated. A lot of the themes that still plague us were present from the very earliest days when this prison was built. Trying to figure out what to do with people, trying to balance just locking them up versus punishment versus getting work out of them versus getting economic benefit out of them, helping them financially support the institution itself. A lot of these themes, which we think of as very contemporary, and they are, they're the same issues that our society has been struggling with for centuries. And there's a lot we can learn about our own history from these types of, this type of property and this type of work that's on the old Newgate. So we're very excited. We will be getting much more comprehensive reports on the archaeology as those last pieces, the excavations on the interior, move forward as part of this stabilization project itself. And so we're certainly hoping to have significant new exhibits about the archaeology itself. We have some smaller scale excavations from years past that have only been publicly interpreted in very minor ways. This is another opportunity for us to roll out a lot more information to bring a new dimension to the public's understanding of the property.
Are all the dollars that are required for this project available, been committed? Or could we hear six months or a year from now that because of budget restrictions, we can't complete this?
So the complete construction budget is already committed and under contract to do this stabilization work itself. So this funding actually comes out of the Community Investment Act. That is funded through filing fee and real estate transactions. So my agency gets a portion of those dollars. Others go to open space and farmland preservation as well as affordable housing throughout the state. So that funding has been, a substantial portion of the funding available to my agency has been committed to have the improvements at all four museums. Old Newgate has the largest piece of that. So not just for this project, but looking forward in the future for other necessary improvements and stabilization on the property. That funding is in place. Now, there is no guarantee going forward that that funding stays in place, but those dollars that have already been contracted, they're in the lockbox. This project is going forward with the funding we already have in place for it. So I can give you assurance that the, you know, the difficult budget issues that we're all going to be struggling with in the coming years, they may affect future planning. They will inevitably, we all have to face the reality that we have to live within our means. However, you know, for this work that we're talking about right now, that, those dollars are already committed. We're contractually obligated to finish this project, and I'm pleased that that's the case. Thank you.
The price tag is $1.4 million. That's what the contract is. So thank yourselves for helping make it possible. Anybody who's done a real estate transaction in the last two years, thank you.
Any other questions? Some of you have got to be awfully curious. Anything else?
What are your plans for the tavern?
The tavern, we've actually had quite a few discussions. Kip Bergstrom. Kit Bergstrom, who until quite recently was deputy commissioner in charge of our programs, had started a process of working with a number of individuals to re-envision what Beat's Tavern would be. So there are ideas in place. For example, on the, you know, the wider end of the spectrum is to reopen it as a tavern, as a public house sort of use. Events uses, as Tammy has mentioned as well, whether weddings or other types of events where the space would be leased out on a short-term basis, is one of the other discussions that we're having. In the short term, as soon as we can get the painting and the minor carpentry repairs done and we get the building available, we're going to be opening it to the public so that everybody can see it as it is. It is very impressive, even in its under-stored state, as a very authentic building. It still has some challenges, but it's a large building, and it has some spaces that are just crying out for some sort of smaller scale events for it. The challenge, for those of you who travel on road frequently enough, the parking is difficult, and our parking is on the opposite side of the road, and it's not a very safe road to handle across. But those are issues that are surmountable for dealing with this. And I think that's part of the community discussion we need to have, you know, what does East Grand Bay want out of Beat's Tavern? What is, what is missing? What's the gap within the community that we can fill by figuring out what to do with that, with that building? Not just as a restored building again, but as another resource for the community in large.
Are you going to be doing any archaeological digs?
The, right now, there are work that needs to be done that is above ground. So the archaeology we do is really focused on the areas that are going to be disturbed. That's not because we have any lack of interest in doing more, but for archaeologists, archaeology itself is inherently destructive. Every time we dig an area, we're physically destroying the record. We're trying to collect as much information as we can, but we need to be very careful about not destroying it to satisfy our own short-term curiosity. So we tend to be very focused in those efforts. There's a lot of archaeology that has yet to be done on that property in general. There is no comprehensive survey of the property, and there have been very targeted studies done in the past, but there's still an awful lot about that side of the road that we don't fully know. In fact, the small burial plots there, there's lots of interest, they're taking another look at those as well. So there's, there are lots of projects further off on the horizon that we'd like to do. For now, we've got to stay focused on getting the property back into good condition and open to the public. So where there's ground disturbance necessary to do that, we will leave it in archaeology everywhere if there's a potential for something significant to be found.
What about protecting with the tavern? Like that corner that's so exposed to passing car?
The...
They put in some battards or something in case?
I, yeah, and it's an interesting discussion. It's not just that, the prison wall is really terrifying. You know, I'm sure...
I think the prison wall wins between...
Well, it is.
The house may not be so lucky.
No, your point is well taken. The road is extremely narrow. You know, we've had a number of conversations with DOT. It is a significant travel route for many people here. So slow is a complicated matter, and it's, you know, protecting with battards is one opportunity, but it becomes a safety concern for DOT. I think quite reasonably, they don't want to put rigid barriers anywhere near the travel lanes where there might, you might actually be having a much more catastrophic accident than you would otherwise. If it's sunned up close to the building, there's still the opportunity for something like that. But the roadway, modern roadway itself is really threatening a needle between these historic properties. That's one of, one of the other constraints that we have to deal with on a regular basis with Old New Gate.
I have a quiet crowd. Want to thank Dan and Karen for being here tonight. Really appreciate it, it's very informative. If anybody has any questions going forward on what's going on in New Gate, don't climb over the wall. Just, you know, I can touch with me, just give me a call. If I don't have the answer, I can probably get it from Dan. But we're just looking forward to getting this back open, at least on a partial basis. And really appreciate your time, and thanks everybody for coming today as well. Thank you.[1687.12][1687.12][applause]